The broadcast of the regular meeting of the Minneapolis zoning board of adjustment will now begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this live broadcast of our virtual meeting today, May 21st, 2020. This meeting includes the remote participation of members as authorized under Minnesota statutes, section 13D point 021, due to the declared local health pandemic. For the record, my name is Matt Perry and I'm chair of the zoning board of adjustment. I'll now call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll so that we may verify the presence of quorum.
Cooper?
Here.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, we're doing a roll call of the board so that we can establish a quorum so we can start the meeting. Are you an applicant or? Oh, okay. Carry on. Finn, listen.
Aye.
Thank you. Hutchins?
Here.
Johansson?
Aye.
Perry?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Softley?
Aye.
Wang?
Here.
That is eight members. Thank you.
Okay, so we have quorum. Thank you. With that, we'll proceed to our agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's legislative information management system available at lims dot minneapolis mn dot gov dot gov. Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Finn Wilson moves and Sandberg seconds. Is there any discussion? I see none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Finn Wilson?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
Aye.
Perry?
Aye.
Sandberg?
Aye.
Softley?
Aye.
Wang?
Aye.
Thank you. That's eight.
Yep, that motion passes and the agenda is approved. I believe all of the board members have seen a copy of the minutes from the May 7th, 2020 zoning board of adjustment meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Finn Wilson and seconded by Sandberg. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Blandford?
Yes.
Cooper?
Aye.
Finn Wilson?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
Aye.
Perry?
Aye.
Sandberg?
Aye.
Softley?
Aye.
Wang?
Aye.
That's eight. Thank you.
So that motion passes and the minutes from the zoning board of adjustment, May 7th, 2020 meeting are approved. Mr. Ellis, are there any petitions or communications?
Chair Perry, members of the board, there are no petitions or communications this evening. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Let's review the agenda. I will read the agenda number and the address of the project and state whether it's slated for consent, continuance, withdraw, or discussion. And I'll just talk a little bit about what these things are. Consent items are those items that will be passed without discussion by the board. We'll be adhering to the staff recommendation found on your agenda under the items recommended motions section. Importantly, any applicable conditions will be listed in the same section. If you agree with this recommendation, including any applicable conditions, you need to do nothing and the board will pass it as recommended. After the item is passed on consent, you're free to drop off the phone call if you'd like. And you can check in with a staff member assigned to that item if you have questions following the decision. If you disagree with the recommendation, please indicate so, and I will add it to our discussion agenda. We have a withdrawal item and I will talk about that when we get to it. And then discussion items, these are items for which the board will take public testimony, deliberate on, and make a decision. After the public testimony has been heard for each particular discussion item, I will close the public hearing for that agenda item. Once I close the public hearing for an item, no additional public testimony will be taken, but staff may be asked to address board questions. After the public hearing for an item is closed, board members will then discuss and act on motions, and the chair only votes in the case of a tie. So let's look at our four land use requests, and there's one appeal. Agenda item number five is 4736 and 4740 Grand Avenue South. This is a discussion item. Agenda item number six is 2604 Cromwell Court. Staff is recommending this item for consent. Is there anyone on the call that would like to speak against this item? I'm hearing no one. Agenda item number seven is 2432 Seabird Avenue. This item is being withdrawn. An approval of the agenda with this item acknowledges this and no further action on the part of the board is required. Agenda number eight is 525 10th Avenue Southeast. This is a discussion item. Let's review the items on the agenda for consent. They are item six. Is there a motion to adopt this item on consent?
So moved. Finn Wilson?
Second, Sandberg.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Finn Wilson?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson?
Aye.
Sandberg?
Aye.
Softley?
Aye.
Wang?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven.
All right, so let's go. We don't have any items for continuance. Let's move on to agenda item number five. Ms. Silas?
Good evening, committee members. I believe IT has my presentation to queue up. All right, so the application before you has to do with a project at 4736 and 4740 Grand Avenue South. On October 7th, the planning commission approved two applications relating to the construction of a new four-story building on the site. Those applications were a parking variance and site plan review. An appeal was filed on October 16th, 2019 by Eric Takashita with regards to the planning commission's decision to approve the parking variance. On November 8th, 2019, the zoning and planning committee upheld the appeal of the parking variance, effectively denying that variance application. Next slide, please. However, the site plan review application for the building itself was never appealed and became final on October 17th, 2019. Just as a note, that site plan review approvals are valid for a period of two years with the option of a one-year extension. And the developer applicant had revised the plans, given that the parking variance was denied, to then provide a one-to-one parking ratio within the building to comply with the parking requirement for the site, which is a one-to-one ratio. Next slide, please. The applicant has submitted, or sorry, when the applicant was going through the preliminary development review process, they submitted changes to the plan. The original building was a four-story building with 23 dwelling units and 10 parking spaces. The revised building has 18 dwelling units and 18 parking spaces to comply with that one-to-one parking ratio required by the zoning code because the parking variance was not granted. There have been some changes to vehicular access to the site. The original plan included just a driveway, an access point to the driveway, a shared driveway along the south of the site. The revised plans have two vehicular access points. One is to that shared driveway, although that has moved slightly to the east. The other is because of the grade change at the site, there are actually the access points, one is on the first floor, and now one is on the second floor to access the alley because the alley is adjacent to the second floor of the building, and I will have some plans that'll demonstrate that here. So next slide, please. This is the original approved site plan that was approved by the planning commission in October, and if you'll go to the next slide, please. This is the revised site plan for the first floor, so you can see that the vehicular access point for that shared driveway did move towards the east. And there is an indication on here, you'll see at the rear of the property line, that there is a new access point to the alley. Next slide, please. These are probably hard to see on your screens, but they are the original proposed upper floor plans. And next slide, please. And the revised plans, the main changes come to the second floor. Where in order to accommodate that required extra parking, the applicant revised the plans to add eight parking spaces on the second floor that is accessed via the residential alley at the rear of the site. Next slide, please. This is the original building elevations that were approved by the planning commission. And they show that one vehicular access point. Because of the significant grade change on the site, the original plan was that the rear yard would be depressed in this way. So the alley, there would be a retaining wall and then along the alley and then a fence, and then the rear yard, so exposing all four levels of the building. Next slide, please. Now with these revised plans, actually at the rear of the building appears to be three stories because it's actually meeting with that existing higher grade on the alley. There's revisions to the rear of the building that add additional brick on that facade and a garage door. And that original garage door on the south elevation did move over towards the front of the building. Next slide, please. When projects are changed after they have been approved at the planning commission, city staff does have authority to authorize minor changes to an approved site plan. And when we do that, we are looking at the following five items that are laid out in section 530.100. So the zoning administrator may authorize minor changes to an approved site plan upon determining each of the following. One is that the proposed changes would not represent a substantial redesign of the project and are consistent with the intent of this chapter and the findings made by the city planning commission and zoning administrator. For this project, the proposed building itself, the building envelope remains the same. The building bulk, footprints, setbacks, building materials, and street-facing facade all remain unchanged. So staff determined that that first item did not constitute a major change. On item number two, the proposed changes would not create the need for additional alternative compliance or land use applications not previously considered and approved by the city planning commission. None of these changes create the need for additional alternative compliance, nor do they trigger additional land use applications. For number three, where the proposed changes would result in additional building bulk, the increase would not exceed 10% of the gross layer area or 2,500 square feet. This project actually reduces the building bulk because we do not count enclosed parking areas as building bulk, so it actually reduces the building bulk for how we count building bulk by over 2,000 square feet. Number four has to do with the height of the, increasing the height of the building. The height of the building remains unchanged. And number five also has to do with building bulk and height. Those remain unchanged. Next slide, please. So staff determined that the proposed changes to the plan that were submitted as part of the preliminary development review project process do not constitute a major change. They can be considered a minor change. So staff was able to approve those changes for an 18-unit building with 18 parking spaces as a minor change and determined that this does not require a new application before the planning commission. And so the application before you today was an appeal submitted by Eric Takashita with an appeal of that decision by the zoning administrator to approve these changes as minor changes. Next slide, please. I also just, most of the appellant's statements have to do with changes to vehicular access on the site, some minor changes with landscaping and other access type things. While there are some changes to the site with regards to vehicular access, pedestrian access, you know, there's been some additional brick added to the facades, that sort of thing. The main item that we look at on that table of minor changes is, are these changes resulting in additional alternative compliance that's required? Or are they triggering new land use applications? Or are they meeting those specific categories of increases to bulk, height, or significant changes to the building? And with regards to these proposed changes, they are not, in staff's opinion, meeting any of those standards. I also wanted to address one of the concerns in the appellant's narrative about incompatibility with the Minneapolis 2040 plan. So the Minneapolis 2040 plan does guide this site for lesser density in the future. The 2040 plan was adopted on January 1st. However, all the policy guidance within the 2040 plan still needs to be adopted into the zoning code. And that has not happened yet and is slated to happen late this year, likely in the last quarter of the year. So the R5 zoning district that has been in place, that was in place last year, is still in place today. That R5 zoning district still allows a four-story building. So even if the, you know, the change is proposed, were determined to be major changes, all that would require is that the applicant file an amendment to site plan review for an already approved four-story building. And just to reiterate that the site plan review was approved in October and is valid for two years with the option of a one-year extension. So this is not an appeal of the site plan review itself. That has already been approved. This is just about the minor changes that were proposed by the applicant to comply with that one-to-one parking ratio. And if you'll move to the next slide, please. Staff is recommending that the board of adjustment adopt staff findings and deny the appeal of the decision of the zoning administrator approving the preliminary development review for an 18-unit building with 18 parking spaces at 4736 and 4740 Grand Avenue South, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Silas. Before we start, I'd like to just go through a couple procedural notes before we have board members ask questions and then hear from the appellant. Appeals of the zoning administrator are not variances. They are also not determinations on whether to grant non-conforming use certificates. The board's job is narrowly defined to determine whether the zoning administrator correctly interpreted and administered the current provisions of the zoning ordinance that are the subject of the appeal. Furthermore, it is not this board's responsibility to determine whether the zoning ordinance is correct or should be changed. We are not a policymaking body. In this particular case, as Ms. Silas has talked about, we are addressing a narrowly defined technical issue. Did the zoning administrator correctly determine that the change submitted by the appellant or the applicant after the project received site plan review approval by the planning commission constitutes a minor change pursuant to section 530.100 of the zoning code? Or whether, as the appellant is arguing, the changes to the site to the site plan that occurred after the city planning commission's approval of the project constitute a major change and therefore require a new land use application to the planning commission? As a matter of due process, the appellant is afforded broad latitude in the testimony that they provide to make their case. However, since written testimony has been provided, for the record, this body will ask the appellant to be respectful of the amount of time they use in providing their testimony today. The same broad latitude and testimony provided applies only to the appellant. It is not afforded to others testifying who are not the appellant or a member of the appellant's team. If I feel public testimony or board member questions or comments are straying for the aforementioned purpose, I will interrupt the speaker and ask them to address the decision before this body. This is not to be rude, but we respect the purpose of these proceedings. And with that, I'll open questions to the board for Ms. Silas. Are there any questions of staff? I see none. Do we have, we have one person in the queue to call, and that is the appellant. Would they like to speak? Mr. Dakeesh?
Yes.
Yes?
Great. So I have the floor?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. Well, hello. My name again is Eric Takashita, and I live at 4737 Harriet Avenue. I want to just start off by saying thank you for your service to our community and for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all today. I'm here representing my neighbors on the 4,600, 4,700, and 4,800 blocks of Grand Pleasant and Harriet Avenues. I want to start off, as was said, that this is an appeal, not about the specifics of the project. And we believe that the law does not give staff the authority to administratively approve the proposed changes. And I'd ask that you turn your attention to the PowerPoint deck that I provided as I outline our rationale. I hope the members of the board have the deck that was submitted with my signing up. Our appeal focuses on the first of the five requirements that Ms. Silas mentioned in section 530.100, section one, right? So specifically 530.101A. And as you can see on the first slide of my deck, within that first section, there are three requirements that must be met for staff to have the authority to approve changes to a site plan. Each of these three requirements must be met. Number one, the changes must be consistent with the findings of the planning commission. Number two, the changes must not be a substantial redesign of the overall project, not just the building. And number three, the changes must be consistent with the intent of chapter 530 site plan review. In this case, not a single one of these requirements is to be met, much less all three. There are changes that are not consistent with the findings of the planning commission. There are changes that substantially redesign the project, and the changes are not consistent with the intent of chapter 530. Because none of these three requirements have been met, the staff does not have the authority to approve the proposed changes. I'll now walk through each of these three criteria in greater detail. First, there are five specific ways in which the proposed changes are not consistent with the findings of the planning commission. As you can see on page two, the proposed changes include an entirely new parking garage that was never discussed or approved by the planning commission. As noted by staff, there are now two, not one, vehicular access points. The planning commission found that there would be no new curb cuts and that all vehicle access would come from Grand Avenue due to the grade change, the significant grade change along the avenue. The proposed changes can contradict these findings of the planning commission. On pages three and four, you can see how moving the ground floor garage door is not consistent with the findings of the planning commission. That vehicular access was, quote, "designed to minimize conflict," close quote, "with the adjacent properties and pedestrians." On page three, you can see two photographs. The first shows how headlights from cars exiting the parking garage in the original design would shine onto the neighbor's garage. The second shows where headlights from the existing, from the exiting cars would now shine directly into the neighbor's house, specifically a bedroom and a kitchen, if these proposed changes are approved. That's pretty significant. On page four, you can see that moving the stairwell to the rear, towards the rear of the site means people now need to walk across the driveway to get to the stairs. Both of these are examples of how moving the garage door to the middle of the building increases conflict between vehicles in the adjacent property and vehicles and pedestrians, contradicting the planning commission's findings that vehicular access is, quote, "designed to minimize conflict." On page five, you can see the planning commission required a fence along the retaining wall at the rear of the property because of that significant grade change. The proposed changes do not include this required fencing. There's no gate across the driveway or along the retaining walls on either the north or south side of the building where there's that grade change. The proposed changes do not meet the requirements that were laid out by the planning commission. And on page six, you'll see that the planning commission found the original plan followed, quote, "best practices," close quote, "in crime prevention through environmental design," SEPTIT. Unfortunately, the proposed changes eliminate windows, reduce natural surveillance, create a dangerous recessed driveway, and an indefensible dead end along the north side of the property. These changes are not consistent with the findings of planning commission because they're not, quote, "best practices," SEPTIT. The second criteria that's in that first part to allow staff to make a minor change is that the changes must not substantially redesign the project. The, quote, "project" is more than just the building, right? Chapter 530 site plan review has an article pertaining to building placement and design, but it also has articles regarding access and circulation, landscaping and screening, and additional standards such as SEPTIT. These other factors must be considered as part of the overall project. And in this case, the proposed changes are more than simply just decreasing the number of units from 23 as 18, as staff has suggested. As you can see on page seven, while some aspects of the building are unchanged, the overall project has been substantially redesigned. There's an entirely new parking structure that increases parking by 80% from what was approved by the planning commission. The location of the garage doors, pedestrian entrances, and sidewalks have been changed. There are changes to the retaining walls, fencing and landscaping, and as noted above, there's changes that impact the crime prevention through environmental design considerations of the site. In isolation, some of these changes may be considered minor, but in aggregate, the number and magnitude of these changes must constitute a substantial redesign of the project. The third and final criteria that exists within that first condition that staff must meet is that the proposed changes must be consistent with the intent of chapter 530 site plan review. And on page eight, you can see that the intent of chapter 530 is to ensure development is consistent with plans approved by the Minneapolis City Council, such as the comprehensive plan Minneapolis 2040, which takes precedent over the zoning code. Minneapolis 2040 designates 4736 and 4740 Grand as interior two, calling for, quote, "small-scale residential with up to three dwelling units on an individual lot." Increase in the number of parking spaces from the 10 that were approved by the planning commission to 18 in order to build 18-inch housing means the building would be three times, three times, larger than what would be allowed under Minneapolis 2040. Thus, the proposed changes are not consistent with the intent of chapter 530 because they conflict with Minneapolis 2040, a plan that has been approved by the city council. In closing, we urge the board of adjustments to support our appeal. It's clear that staff does not have the authority to authorize the proposed changes. The proposed changes are not consistent with the findings of the planning commission. They are a substantial redesign of the overall project. And they are not consistent with the intent of chapter 530. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for listening, and I'd have to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Takashita. Are there questions of the applicant or the appellant? Any questions of the appellant? I see none. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one. Ms. Cooper?
Hi, I know we don't do sort of zoning appeals very often, so forgive me if this question is inappropriate, but I am trying to understand why the appellant wants this, why the appellant is appealing the decision of the zoning administrator. It seems like it would be in his favor to have the building approved as it has been, so I think I'm just missing something.
Sure. Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Yes, please.
Thanks for the question. You know, at its core, this is about the law, right? The city, I used to work for the city for a number of years, right? And this is about city staff needing to follow the law. That's my number one priority here, right? So that's first and foremost why this appeal has been filed, right? Beyond that, I will speak to, Ms. Silas mentioned that we didn't actually appeal the site plan when it was approved in October, and that's true. We didn't. Because I think we were really hopeful that we could work with the developer and that the developer would come back with a plan to build 10 inches of housing, right? Instead, they increased that to 18, almost double, right? They haven't met with us at all. They refused to meet with us, in fact, right? They've refused to meet with us, in fact, right? And so part of this is we need an opportunity to express our concerns at the planning commission at a public hearing because the developer has been unwilling to sit down and meet with us, right? So this is about following the law, and this is about due process and allowing for the community to have an opportunity to speak directly to the developer and for the planning commission then to hear our concerns and make a judgment rather than having staff make it behind closed doors. Hopefully, that's responsible.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak or ask a question of Mr. Takashita? I see no one. I hear no one. Is there anyone else in the queue who would like to weigh in on this issue?
Chair Perry, there are no other callers for this item.
Okay. So let's close this component and move on to board comment. Mr. Sandberg, and then Mr. Hutchins.
Thank you, Chair Perry. I agree with the zoning administrator in this case for the five reasons stated by staff. I believe that the changes are indeed minor, that if it were to go back to the planning commission, the, they had approved a, a site plan that was much more improved, intrusive, I would think, and occupying more space. I think that the changes proposed actually make the building a lower, lower density than what was approved, so I have no, no reason to believe that the planning commission would, would not continue to approve it. So I agree with staff recommendation.
Thanks for those comments, Mr. Sandberg.
Yeah, I just have maybe one question for staff that they can respond to the second floor turning from residential housing over to a parking ramp. Is that not considered a substantial change in the city's eyes, or is that, is that still a minor change?
That, that would still be considered a minor change. The, the proposal to reduce the number of units and increase the parking and add the additional vehicular access door does not trigger any of those five items that are defined in chapter five thirty point, uh, one, point one hundred. I think one, one of the things that we, we look at when we're making these determinations is if this, if this project came through as a new project, is that something that we would not have allowed because it would have required alternative compliance or a variance or something like that? This, you know, the proposal to add the parking and the second vehicular access point is something that would not have triggered alternative compliance, would not have, you know, caused issues in terms of making the findings we need to make as part of site plan review. And therefore, staff determined it does not, you know, trigger any of those five items from five thirty point one hundred.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? I'm seeing none. Would someone like to make a motion then? Any of the board members like to make a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Hutchins, to deny the appellant and go forward with the staff findings.
There's a motion, and...
Mr. Sandberg, I will second that motion.
Mr. Sandberg has seconded the motion. There's, we've had some discussion on it. Is there any further discussion we'd like to have on it? Anyone? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Finlessen?
Aye.
Hutchins?
Aye.
Johansson? Sandberg?
Aye.
Softly?
Nay.
Wang?
Nay.
That's five yea, two nay.
So that motion passes, and the appeal is denied. Mr. Takashita, you can see staff about what your options are going forward. Let's move on to our next item. It's number eight on our agenda, five twenty-five Tenth Avenue South.
Good afternoon, Chair Perry, members of the board. The application before you is a request to vary the off-street parking requirement from nineteen required off-street stalls down to eleven in order to convert several dens or storage areas into lawful bedrooms. If we could pull up the presentation that I had prepared, please. So the subject site is located in the university area overlay district, which has different parking requirements than other areas of the city. The requirement, rather than being one stall per dwelling unit, is point five stalls per bedroom with fractional stalls of point five or less rounding down. The building was constructed in twenty fourteen, and at that time initially received a variance for a reduction from fifteen to eleven, as well as a front yard variance and site plan review, but did include these sleeping areas or, or, sorry, not, not sleeping areas, dens or storage areas, which according to the applicant have been being used since that time as sleeping areas. If we could advance the next slide, please. We have here a floor plan for the third floor, which is the floor where these, the rooms in question are located. They're clouded in the middle of that floor plan. The applicant has labeled them as as-built, showing doors and closets and beds. But on the next slide of the presentation, we have the approved copy from the city records from their application to the planning commission. They have clouded that same area that shows that those were clearly open rooms, no, I see if you could advance to the next slide there. Clearly showing open rooms, no closets, no bedrooms, clearly were not approved as bedrooms, which is why they were not captured in the initial parking requirement when the application was heard before the planning commission in twenty thirteen. With regards to the required findings for the parking variance, if we could advance to the next slide, please. Staff finds that there are not, or, sorry, the, the next slide after this, sorry, thank Staff finds that there are not practical difficulties that are unique to the property. Proximity to high transit routes is thankfully not a unique condition in the city, nor does it represent a, a difficulty in complying with an ordinance that is specifically written to regulate the area around the university. Staff finds that the proposal does meet policies of the comprehensive plan. It is in compliance with the twenty forty plan as adopted, which does call for the elimination of parking requirements throughout the city, however, that has not yet been adopted into the zoning ordinance. While staff finds that it does meet the comprehensive plan, it does not meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance. As I mentioned, the ordinance is specifically, in this instance, intended to regulate the differing manner in which housing is used in the area around the university as opposed to other areas of the city. With regards to the third finding, staff finds it would not alter the essential character of the locality and would have a positive effect on health, safety, and welfare by allowing the building owner to legalize sleeping areas that are being used without building code inspections or things of that matter, but that it may have a, a negative impact on use and enjoyment of neighboring properties by increasing the demand for off-street parking area, or off-street, increasing the demand for on-street parking, which is always a concern in and around the university. As such, staff recommends denying the application, and I will stand for questions.
Thanks for that presentation, Ms. Brandt. Are there any questions of staff? I see none. So let's open the public hearing. I understand that Mr. Wolf, the applicant, is in the queue to talk, and if you are there, if you could unmute your phone and please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Chair and Board, and thank you, Ms. Brandt. My name is Matthew Wolf. I'm an attorney with Tap Law Firm here on behalf of applicant. The variance request comes before you today to bring an existing condition of this property into legal compliance. The property was developed in two thousand thirteen and was designed to have twenty-nine bedrooms as well as storage and study areas within the units. These storage and study areas have regularly been used by university student tenants and other tenants as additional sleeping quarters, which caused a conflict with the zoning code. My understanding of the circumstances that, that brought this around and the discrepancy that Ms. Brandt noted in her reports, I believe a property manager had, had clauses essentially added to these rooms to basically accommodate the use that was already being made of these, of these rooms, and, and then the, the conflict arose as a result. So due to tenants' prior use, we've seen a representative, representative sample of the parking needs on the property and surrounding the property under this increased load. The parking needs of the residents have consistently been met, and I'm not aware of any complaints by tenants or neighbors with regard to parking issues caused by the occupancy of this building. Second, we are aware of at least two instances where a greater parking variance request was granted under substantially similar circumstances, including the required variance findings, which were similar and in substantially similar locations and proximity to transit, and both of those were MD University Overlay located just south of this property. The first is the property located at eleven twenty-one Fourth Avenue Southeast, which allowed a variance down to point two five parking spaces per bedroom. And the second is the property located at twelve oh two Fourth Street Southeast, which allowed a variance down to point two four spaces per bedroom, using the same proposed findings that we had proposed in this case, where we are looking for a variance down to point two eight spaces per bedroom. While we recognize that these variances do not set legal precedent, we request that they be recognized as setting a practical standard for how similarly situated requests for variances will be treated similarly. Our variance request is in line with the goals articulated in the twenty forty plan and is mindful of practical considerations that take into account the property's proximity to the university and to available transit options. We respectfully request that the similarly situated variance request be granted. Thank you.
Thanks for that testimony. Is there, are there any questions of Mr. Wolf? Don't see any right off the bat, but I have a question, Mr. Wolf. We have to find for three findings, as I'm sure you're aware. One of them is the uniqueness of the property and the practical difficulty. I'm not really hearing what that practical difficulty is, and I think staff has pointed out in its staff report that things that are, would be considered assets, you're referring to as practical difficulties. Can you talk about what the practical difficulties are?
I can, and I'll, I'll actually quote from one of the previously approved variance findings to do so. So in, in the, in one of these reports that references, due to its proximity to the university campus, and based on the developer's experience with similar project locations near urban campuses, the actual resident parking demand will be well below the code requirements. Most residents will not have cars and will walk or bike to school and work, and will utilize car services for longer trips. There are high-frequency bus lines in close proximity to the site, and where the project located outside of the UA overlay, the project would qualify for a fifty percent reduction in its parking requirement, and this creates a practical difficulty with meeting the appropriate demand for the property and complying with this ordinance. And that was the staff's finding in a, in their request that brought this down to a point two five variance for parking.
Thank you. Any other questions of, of the applicant? I see none. Is there anyone who else would like to, I, I guess you're the only caller in the queue for this item, so there isn't anyone else to speak for or against this item, so I'll close the public hearing. Do we have anybody who would like to weigh in on this particular item? If not, I would ask for a motion. Oh, there's a comment from Mr. Softly.
Thank you, Chair Perry, and thank you for the presentation, Mr. Wolf. I'm in favor of staff position on this, and given the, the lack of other comments from the board, I would make a motion to approve staff findings.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
This is Sandberg. I will second the motion. I also agree with staff findings, and I think the fact that this building plan was approved with other variances and the fact that it was misused doesn't justify an additional variance.
Okay, so I want to be clear, the motion is to adopt staff finding and deny the, the request for, for reduction in parking requires, required parking.
That is correct, Chair Perry. Thank you. I, I caught my inarticulate speech, and yes, to deny the variance.
Okay. So that's the motion before the board right now. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cooper?
Aye.
Johansson?
Aye.
Sandberg? Softly?
Aye.
Wang?
Aye.
That's six yea. Thank you.
So the request is denied, Mr. Wolf. You can talk to the staff person assigned to the project to see what your options are going forward. With that, we have completed all of our items on the agenda for this meeting. I will ask members and staff if there are any other matters to come before this meeting. I will ask members and staff if there are any other matters to come before this meeting. Mr. Alice is saying no new or old business. And I don't see anybody else weighing in, so without that, without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next meeting will be June 11, 2020. Thank you, everyone.